Okay, should I?
Practice again.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's seven oh five. I am calling the C E C twenty five, November twenty twenty three general meeting to order. Carly, please do the roll call.
Wing you.
Present.
Carbone, Chris. I saw him over there somewhere. Okay, back to them. Frank Chow. Joseph Chow.
Present.
Sung Young Lee.
Present.
Alvin Hung.
Not here yet.
Okay. Peter Louis.
Present.
Robert Wavora.
Present.
Justin Chen. I know.
Okay. Louis, you can still hear us, right?
Yes, I can. Sounds good.
Okay, so, all right, so we will continue with the meeting. At this time, I want to do a moment of silence for the families, the victims that's been, you know, affected as a result of the situation in Israel. Okay, so let's take a minute. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Let's review our October minutes. Superintendent, the mango was here last in October?
Oh my God, sorry. What she do?
No.
I will.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, that's a habit.
No, Dr. Antoni is on here, just that the mango.
It's the, it's, it's, I have to.
Oh, okay. So Frank Chow is here. So.
Ari, number three, should maybe approve on September meeting minutes.
Oh, yes. What did they call? October. So we will do this for you. Okay. Other than that, I think the minutes looks good, right? Everyone approved?
Yes.
Yeah, as I mentioned.
Yeah. Okay, great. So now I'm going to turn it over to our interim superintendent, Dr. Mike Antoni, for his report.
Sure. Thank you very much, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Let me just open up my. Guys. Well, Carly, can you just give me? Sharing capacity. Right, yep. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. So a couple of things that I'm just gonna go over with you this evening is a small little space, and this I do ask our C E C members, if you wouldn't mind, in your folder, you'll see something that says all in our Fall in Love with Books contest, we have some some schools that participated in this little contest, just to really promote reading across our district. So you notice a little Q R code, we're asking you guys to do a a brief little, brief little vote at some point today, and we will identify three winners across our district that will be treated to a nice little surprise from, from me, myself, that I'll be talking into each of these schools to recognize each of those classes, you know, in a special way. So if you wouldn't mind, as we go through, through my, my little chat, you can just peer at those those examples of what our kids and our teachers put together, that would be great. And then at some point during this session today, we'll, we'll announce the three winners. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Spooktacular Book Event, our monthly newsletter for our community to, to give a, a quick little connection to, to make sure that they're subscribing. I'm gonna talk briefly around the Listening Learning Tour, some summary of what it is that we've noticed and some of the actions that we're gonna be putting in place as a result. I'll talk briefly about the middle school applications inside of that space, just the, the location where all of you can can connect with our schools that are all having open houses, open house events for our families. And then I'm gonna spend just a little bit of time, I'm not gonna go through the entire, the entire deck of, of data that's present, but diagnostic screening window did just close this past Friday. So I did get as much data in there for you as possible, so that you can look at, and I'm just gonna cover some of the bases on that to give everyone just an idea of, general idea of how we're starting off this year comparatively speaking to twenty two, twenty three. And that will be my report for today. So the Fall in Love with Books Contest, the district-wide, we're gonna identify three winners, which the C E C will, will help contribute to in terms of identifying who those schools will be and the doors that will be identified for this work. Yes, you know, I love data. Thank you, Ms. Ketchum. We did have a number of schools, as you can see, that were able to participate in this event in this set of activities, and again, intended to really promote reading across our schools. So as you review the submissions later on, we will talk about which ones have been identified as the top three winners, and you'll see a little slide here, which will be populated by the time we conclude tonight, so that we can share which schools were the top winners for our district. Spooktacular Family Book Night event, we did do two of these. Thank you very much to our district, district team, they did an amazing job of getting organized. Thank you to the C E C, thank you to Councilmember Palladino. We had a really great tone turnout, Bound Park. Hundreds of, of kids and their families, we gave away over four thousand books. We did not have one book left over at Bound Park, which was really amazing. We had New York City Kids Rise there as well, sharing in the process and encouraging our families to participate in that program. I would love to thank all of our teachers. We had a number of teachers from across our schools that volunteered their time to help, help share in this process to get books out to our kids. And one of the parts that I loved about the, the most around these two events, which I'm gonna talk about the, the next one in just a moment, was that some of our families came with their little, their little blankets, and they popped those bank blankets down in the park and began reading with their kids, you know, in the park, right from that, right from that very moment. So it was really, really both of these events turned out to be great. And the one at Casino Park, we gave away over eight thousand books.
Wow.
You know, so we did not have a, a limit on, on the books on that day, because we came extra prepared because of the first event. The first event, we, we had a huge turnout as well, so we wanted to make sure that we were extra prepared. So we had plenty of books. Thank all of our, of our vendors that also donated those books to our, to our toward these whole events, and it worked out really quite well. So again, thank you to all of those that were in participation with us. We really do appreciate it. And I'm hoping that it lent itself to our kids doing a little bit more reading with their parents. That's what the, the goal of that was. And I can tell you just by watching some of our kids, they really took advantage of doing a good job of book shopping that day. Just for, for all of you guys to know, we do have a monthly newsletter. Ms. Mari from our team organizes this on a routine basis and puts them out on a monthly, just with some highlights from our district, things that are going on, things to keep you guys up to speed on. So you can find that on our district site, D two five dot N Y C slash news. You will find all of the information for those newsletters, and they are archived, so you'll be able to see across the year. I encourage you to subscribe to it. You'll get those notifications that, you know, that a new one has been posted. Listening to Learn Tour was able to connect with over fifteen hundred family, family members, community members in District Twenty Five. We had twelve stops, both in person and virtually. Our in-person sites at two fourteen, one eighty-five, one twenty-nine, one eighty-four, twenty, and one sixty-four. I thank all of our building leaders who opened their doors. They made a very welcoming environment for all those, for all of our guests to, to come in and join. I thank Senator Lou and Councilmember Ang, who joined our visit at P S twenty, so I thank them for their continued support for our work at the district. You can see some of our pictures, some, some of them, I think I only have one in there with, with the young man up to, to the top left, but the parent with that young man from the top left actually came to multiple events, so I have multiple pictures of that young man. What, what a, what a nice youngster he is, and he actually participated and shared during the last event, and talked about how as a, I believe he was only six or seven years old, how he connected with his peers so that he can come to that event and share himself, the things that needed to improve based on their, based on their ideas. Yes, thank you very much, Margaret. So he did a great job, and I appreciate him for being there. And as an outgrowth from, from this Listening to Learn Tour, there were a number of things that, that did come up. And I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about, you know, where we are in process for that in just, in just a few moments. A few moments. So middle school, open house events, there's a Q R code there, there is the link to our district site, you can have access to any of those. Please make sure you're connecting with our schools, especially as we're going through the middle school application process. As you guys know, and I shared last, last time, application window open, it does close on December eighth, offers will be available in April. So just as an outgrowth, some of the things that, that did come up, both during the Listening to Learn Tour and here right at the C E C, was one, the success around the Special Education Meeting that you guys kind of fostered as a team that happens every year. So because of that, I did go to Nathan, I said, you know what, that was a big success. Parents also mentioned it during the Listen to Learn Tour, so he's added three new events during, during this year that will be available to our families in a virtual space. So Understanding Your Child's I E P, a review of the different sections of the I E P, Understanding Disability Classifications and Special Education Eligibility, and then Understanding the Turning Five Process, which is really important for any of our children that are coming into this space as four-year-olds, that very well may need to have some needs that, that need to be evaluated before they even come into elementary school. So Nathan was, was gracious enough to offer these three events. We'll likely do one earlier in the morning and then one later in the afternoon, so that everyone has an opportunity to access each of those. I think it's really, really important that for us as a community, this is something that is clearly important to our community. So we wanna make sure that we're offering as much, much information as we possibly can. So even within the context of these three examples, are there other things that you as parents would say, you know what, this would really be helpful for me? I'm not quite sure about this, and we'll work to organize around it, but this was an outgrowth of both the Listening to Learn Tour and just the conversation that has happened here at the C E C. Parent Support for Executive Functioning Skills. So during the visits, we also heard about the importance around social emotional learning and connecting with our families in relationship to that. We also saw that based on survey data from a survey we gave at the district towards last, last school year. And as a result, we have three specific events that we're gonna do in multiple languages. The first one will be at twenty-five Q one twenty-nine. That will be on November ninth, so next week, there'll be a session specifically focused on, you know, planning and helping our kids organize, get themselves focused. How do they regulate their own behaviors? And we know that for our children that are both in elementary school and middle school, these are things that are certainly important. You know, I know, I know for myself, you know, there, there are certain times, just in terms of that organization space, that I need to remind myself as an adult, let alone for our kids that may have a hard time doing that for themselves. So this is gonna be led by Esther, Jan May, Jan May, excuse me, Esther Jenny and Wing from our team, our social worker, who are gonna be connecting with this work in those three spaces to make it accessible as possible in each of those languages.
Give me a one time.
Yeah. Esther.
Yes.
What time did we say for the executive functioning? Sorry, guys.
Five to six.
From five o'clock to six. For each of the sessions. The only one that we have the location set for right now is the first one. We'll be updating the site, and I'll update you guys here in the next meeting in December with the exact location for the fourteenth. But yes, that, that is upcoming. Safety-based training. So one of the, the spaces that also came up during the Listening to Learn Tour was around safety in particular, the idea around children and not wearing helmets on scooters, on bicycles, also around traffic safety. So because of that, I got, I got in touch with the Department of Transportation, that they run their Vision Zero program, and we are in process right now of organizing events for both parents and students to make sure that we're connected in this space of traffic safety. I'm sure that you guys saw recently, there was a horrible incident that happened in New York City with a youngster that was hit by a vehicle. So, you know, these are, these are things that we do wanna make sure that both our children and our parents are consistently aware of. So that is something that we'll be offering coming soon.
That's what I also feel about, like even safety, like drop-offs and pickup.
Yeah, so they, they do offer that as well. The, the, the next state of that conversation is gonna be with me and the D O T.
One oh seven, actually on the news. Yeah. I have the blanket, you know, you guys are interested.
Provision Zero. Yeah. So yeah, it, it's, it's really around making sure that, that our kids in our communities are, are fully aware of of being mindful of the, the, the traffic safety space. So we will continue to do and offer that work. Whoops. I jumped ahead. H M H parent sessions. So the family conferences throughout the year, remember just, we have parent-teacher conferences actually tomorrow for, for our elementary schools. So just inviting our parents, just be mindful that asking around what are the specific needs of my child, it's okay to ask that. You know, are you seeing any strengths or weaknesses in my child's reading skills? How, how is he or she doing? How can I support my child's reading development at home? Making sure that we're in that constant ebb and flow of communication with our classroom teachers so that, you know, that we are aware of what it is that we can do for our kids at home. Really super, super important. So also connecting with our parent coordinators. When are we offering those events inside of our buildings? They will be connecting with you guys and making offerings around H M H, H M H curriculum. We, as a district, will be making some offerings available to you just to get a little bit more knowledgeable around what our kids are experiencing in the H M H curriculum itself. So stay tuned for some dates. We're gonna be getting on that really soon.
I know one of the things that's come up in S L T is what I am, is actually those one of the things that's come up recently is the intro letters for each module of H M H, and I don't know if the other schools are sending them home, but our school specifically is sending them home, but they're actually gonna be adding that to Dojo as well, to use Class Dojo. So that the parents are seeing exactly what's happening in every module as they go.
Yeah, love that, certainly from, you know, in, in general, but certainly from parent perspective of the importance of, of sharing all of the things that are present and upcoming. The essential questions from these units are, are, are pretty catchy for our kids. They seem to be enjoying getting into that space. And, you know, big thanks out to all of our, all of our teachers and, and building leaders for, for rolling out this space over the last two months as we continue to learn through the program. But that is an important part, too, is making sure that our families are aware of what the next steps are. And the biggest one that did come up during the Listening to Learn Tour, that, that was every single one of the tour stops was around after-school programs. Every single store, tour stop, a parent mentioned that particular space. So we are in process, there's no guarantee that, 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 I'm not giving anyone a guarantee, but I have already started conversations with with our point people from the Department of Education within context of D Y C D to see if there's anything else that we can do for our schools. I will continue to keep you guys posted on that if I make any headway in support of, of additional programs for that work.
Additional free programs or just?
So, yeah, so that would, that is what my intent is. Whether the reality will be that I can make that happen is a, is a different story, but we've already started the conversations based on these tour visits, and we're gonna work towards seeing what we can do to get something happening there. I can't, like I said, I can't guarantee it, but I wanted you guys to be aware that that did come up, and we're gonna work towards that end for our schools. Really quickly, as I said, I have like thirty data slides here. I'm not going to go through all thirty of them. I'm just gonna give you the general idea, and everything else is all contextualized inside of the slides with a short little description for each of our subgroups here as well. But I did wanna kind of go through, just to give you guys a, a little bit of an understanding as to where we started twenty twenty-two, fall of twenty-two, twenty-two, and fall of twenty twenty-three. So the Acadians Assessment is an assessment for our children in grades kindergarten through grade two. Our children use this as a screening tool in order to, to, to get an understanding of where they are as as beginning readers in those grades. So currently, we have under fifty-four percent of our kids that are currently what would be deemed at or above grade level at this point of the school year, which would have, when they took it, is late September, beginning October, as compared to fifty percent, fifty point three, three percent from last year. So mid-year, we were at fifty-four percent in total across all three of those grades, which we are already close to that space. With the end target was fifty-eight percent from last year. The goal is that we surpass that space, obviously, for this school year. And the, the, the the, the nice part of, of this news is that we're starting at an elevated place, hit space than where we did last year. Now, obviously, you say fifty-four percent, but that's about kids meeting the entire grade level standard already. That doesn't happen in September and October. But we are starting off at, at a different place than we did last year, which is encouraging. You'll see in a, in a few moments, our kids in kindergarten are starting off in a different place than they did last year. They're about seven percent higher than last year. Our first graders are in a little bit of a higher place, and second grade has remained consistent at sixty-six percent of our kids currently on or above grade level in grade two. So what you'll see inside of this slide is basically what I just kind of indicated. You'll see across each grade level and from, from the top bar to the next bar down, in terms of all three of those grades combined, you'll see that there is a little bit of, of an improvement from where we began last year to where we are this year. But we still have a number of kids that are certainly in this well below benchmark level, which we do need to attend to. So this is the reason why it's important during our meetings that we have with our parent, with our teachers as parents, talking about those things that are being assessed inside of this program. So you'll find very similar types of patterns across each of our subgroups, our Hispanic learners, our Black learners, our white learners, our Asian learners, all of them grew by around three percent comparatively speaking to this, and I shouldn't say grew, are starting off in the same space, in about three percent higher than where we began last school year. So the one part of this that I do wanna emphasize is, oops. I'm clicking too fast myself here. Where am I? Okay. Are the domains. So in kindergarten, the space that they start off on is something called first sound fluency. So it basically goes along with, as the teacher says a word, it's that the kids can recognize the first sound of the word. So moon, what would be the first, first sound in the word moon, and the child will have to say moon. Right? So that's that first base for our kindergarteners, that's where they begin in this, and this is where they are assessed. And what you can see just from this first, this first assessment, they're starting off at a higher rate than where we began last year. Now, you might say, well, Mike, why is it that we have so many kids in this well below benchmark? So just so that everyone knows, in between kindergarten first and second grade, we have twenty-seven hundred children that are either first or second year English language learners. Okay, twenty-seven hundred, that amounts to thirty-five percent of our kindergarten children. All just, are, are all new language learners. So there is a space of importance inside of this, inside of this work to understand that we have a lot of children that are just learning the English language that are inside of kindergarten, first, second grade, that we are always moving towards that space of proficiency. But just so that you have a little bit of context inside of that. In first grade, they have phoneme segmentation fluency, which is about them breaking apart the sounds within a word. That's something that, that is an expectation for all of our kids, and you'll notice here that there is, there are fewer children that are in that well below benchmark comparatively speaking to last year. Kid, the first grade is, starting place is at a lower rate every year so far than other grade levels comparing kindergarten and second grade. This is a, a, a grade that's, that because of the asks at the beginning of the year, do start off in a lower space than our other grade levels. So they go from that to nonsense word fluency. There'll be a made-up word, and then the children have to be able to decode what that word is and say the word. So it's the words correct. I mean, whole words read and, and words correct, meaning that they can sound it out, and that the word is being pronounced in, in the correct way. So that's another way our first graders are assessed inside of this space. And you'll see here, there was improvement from, from where they started off last year to this year, which has been, you know, a pretty significant space, which is why we're engaging in foundations integrity inside of our classrooms. A nonsense word fluency, that one I did. And then grade two begins with nonsense word fluency about their ability to decode words inside of phonics, and you'll see that there is a, a difference here for our kids from last year to this year. And this one was a significant difference for, in terms of whole words read for our kids, that they were able to see the word and say the word for our children in grade two. If you look at the orange bar to the blue bar for children that are at benchmark, it is, is much more significant of a change than the other areas, which is saying that our kids are starting to learn how to decode some of those words, even though in this case they're nonsense words, they're able to look at the letters, make sense of it, and make the sounds that are associated with it. So moving in the trend of the right direction here for our second graders. Okay, oral reading fluency, they're given passages, they're expected to read those passages, making sure that there is that space of accuracy and fluency within that space. So they do have, it, it isn't, these are time types of assessments. So if they don't respond in, in an appropriate amount of time as per the norms of the assessment, then, you know, it moves on that the child still needs additional support. So this is an area fluent, you know, fluency is always an area that will help be the building block for our kids to be really strong readers that, that build towards that level of comprehension. So this is something that, that our teachers are consistently working on. And the last is about retelling. So they're using those same types of passages and being able to kind of, kind of retell what it is that they actually read inside of that space. Okay, I ready. This is primarily for kids in grades three through eight. What you will see inside of this is that it's almost identical to where we began last year, across our grade levels. There, you'll see some variation here and there, but in large part, the data is pretty consistent from where we began last year to where we began this year. Everything now in between, and the reason why I put where we are mid-years, because the goal is that we're surpassing that mid-year benchmark of forty-six percent from last year. The goal is that we're, we're pushing our kids beyond that space of proficiency. So we put this out there just as a means of just connecting with where we were before. The path needs to be the, the teacher for us moving forward, right? So that's, that's kind of the, the work that we're encouraging all of our schools to do is making sure that, you know, even though all of this work was, was from last school year, it should be the space of understanding as to what do we need to think about and do differently perhaps to support our work. One of the reasons why we've adopted a new curriculum across District Twenty Five as well. So I'm not gonna spend a tremendous amount of time going through each of these slides. You'll see that it's very consistent. The bars, you're not gonna notice very much difference between one year to the next. In any of these grade levels, it's very, very similar in nature from comparing one year to the other. And that you will find very consistent across each of our subgroups as well. There's very little variation that you're gonna notice from, from grade to grade. Important for us, obviously, to know and keep in mind as we're planning our work. Okay, and these, well, these are here for you, but basically just giving you the, the kind of rundown for, just get a little bit of an understanding as to where we are. And the, the last space of this, and you will notice that the areas that our I-ready assessment covers and assesses our children on, phonemic awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, overall comprehension. overall comprehension, comprehension of literature and comprehension of the informational text. So the 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 big space, especially for our third graders, is this I this notion of of building our ability to decode words. Um it is important that our kids continue to get and receive support inside of that space. We can't sound out the words that are in front of us. It's hard for them to make sense of them. So you will notice as as we go through here that in some cases, the percentage of children that are below level in comprehension is elevated from where we were uh last year at this time with different third graders. Um but just keeping in mind, this is an assessment that covers the entire year. So because kids aren't on grade level now, doesn't mean that they won't be by the end of the year. This these assessments go across the school year, not just one moment in time. Uh grade four, again, you'll see side by side, very little variation between each of these areas, overall comprehension from sixty eight to sixty seven, very, very similar in nature. Phonics still being an area that we need to support for our kids in fourth grade. If you remember during our last session in uh early October, I talked about our third graders with phonics. This is showing itself again for our current fourth graders now. So we said that was an area that would be in need. It's something that we will continue to work on as the year is going on for our fourth graders and beyond. Same type of situation for our fifth graders. Um you will notice here also in phonics, we while it's lower than what was in grade four, we still have children here that do need some support with their with their ability to decode, which will help these other areas as well. As the years go on, the year goes on, you will you will see that these will wind up, these these bars will decrease in terms of the number of children not meeting standards. As this again covers the entire year's worth of work. Similar for grade six. Grade seven and grade eight, they are all very, very consistent in terms of starting place from year over year. Now, things that we're doing about this, just so that everyone is aware, we are offering onsite professional learning uh from our team members. We have two A S team members, if you, as you guys have heard me talk about in the past. Uh they are providing supports for Hegarty and Foundations, those are the phonemic awareness and and phonics programs in the district, supporting early childhood classrooms across schools. Uh monthly professional learning sessions for teachers and administrators to support the rollout of H M H into reading and into literature. Um separate sessions are organized for both K to five and six to eight. Uh district team members have been assigned to schools and offering uh coaching and professional learning support. Uh professional learning for staff to support the design and implementation of centers and small group instruction. When we end our N L supports, we're doing a a series of trainings on Election Day to support our teachers across districts. Um all schools are receiving coaching support from an organization, an outside organization. I think I mentioned this during the October meeting, um every K to five school is receiving a minimum of seventeen coaching days. Um for um to support instruction in classrooms and every six through eight is receiving a minimum of eleven coaching days where someone's coming in from the outside to support instructional practice. Uh assessing learning, just so that every parent uh is aware of this, all schools are administering the end module assessments in the H M H program with the goal of making sure that we have an idea of how our kids are performing against standards. This is something for you guys just to know so that you can ask some questions about that as well. This this is a process, you know, uh many of these assessments are certainly due to our kids because they had an experience in past years. So we will grow with this over over the course of time. And all of our schools are administering foundations assessments to to assess our kids' phonics-based skills as well. Um I ready math, really quickly, similar in nature to last year, we're we're slightly below where we started off with from from one year to the next. Um at that space of twenty six percent, and I know that when you look at that, you say, oh, my God, that is really, really low. Our children do make up that ground as the year goes on. Um and which resulted this year in us being in that sixty six percent performance range. The goal is that we are exceeding that space this year, but just wanted you guys to be aware that that is the starting place for mathematics as well. I do not have the breakdown yet for all of the subgroups here. I will do that for you guys at a later time. Uh it was only so much I can crunch in a couple of pages from the end of the from the end of the assessment. So but I wanted to get to you as much as I could um at this point. And in math, similar type of scenario, we are offering monthly trainings for our principals and A Ps. We are reconnecting with math as well. Uh we don't want to lose sight of math um with this new implementation of H M H uh going on across the district. Uh so there's monthly, aside from A P and principal meetings, we have monthly principal plus one uh or A P plus one uh meetings that are really focused on structure of a math lesson, math routines, math vocabulary, task development and student discourse. So that is kind of the the umbrella of the work that we are engaging in as a community at this time. Um and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. That was a lot of information.
Maybe man, just ask him a question.
Yeah, do you need the mic?
I don't need a mic. Is the math assessment assessing what they should know for the year?
So the the yeah, the diagnostic, so fourth grade, it's it's kind of getting an idea of where they would fall within a grade level span. So it's a diagnostic assessment.
Suppose kick it ninety percent, will you put that keep the next grade level math class?
In the what?
Suppose the fourth grader gets ninety percent of what's on the test, would you take that fourth grader, put it in the fifth grade math class?
If they get ninety percent on the diagnostic?
Yes.
So um you don't have to answer it. It's a rhetorical. Thank thank you for that rhetorical question.
Do you have a question?
Do you know about the school, schools that are piloting Amira? And what you know about that?
Yeah, yeah.
High school specifically didn't use it. I don't know if anyone else knows what it is.
So Amira is accessible to all of our schools in grades K through two. Um Amira is, so it's an A I program. Um basically, in a nutshell, it it is an online, I don't want to use the word tutor. I don't think that's the most, that's not the appropriate word. Um but it's an it's an online artificial intelligence avatar that basically communicates back and forth with the child. So as they're reading, if a child mispronounces a word, Amira will will kind of bring them back to that space of what that word was. And then encourage them to articulate it the most, you know, in in uh pronounce it in a different way. So um it is accessible to all of our children in grades K through two, absolutely.
Oh, it's on their iPad, right?
Yeah.
It's on a device, yeah, yep.
So three to the three to five would not have that app on their iPad.
No, so it it doesn't mean that they can use it. Yes, it is something that is, but right now what the schools have available to them at the school level is kindergarten through second grade. It's a program that goes K through six. Um but our schools have access right now to K through two. Yeah.
Right. Anyone else? Anyone on this side have any question? Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Um so next, we're very excited tonight because um this is the first time since I prior to COVID that we have someone um from the O- Office of District Planning to give a presentation in person. So I'd like to welcome Rebecca Lightman. You wanna um bring your laptop to the center here?
Yeah. Okay, that's uh, yeah. You could stand, you could sit. You feel comfortable.
You folks hear me on here? Okay, great. Um so I am Reba from the Office of District Planning. I'm the Director of Queens Planning and I'm joined by my colleague Raya. Who will swap seats with me when we when we swap slides. Um but thank you, yes, we're here in person tonight. We do have this conversation annually with C E Cs. And we're excited to to meet some folks in person who we have yet to before today. And so before we jump into some data, which is a big part of our work, we do just want to share what the Office of District Planning does for folks who might be new to our work. So at the D O E, we do sit under First Deputy Chancellor Weisberg. And we partner closely with a a bunch of offices across the D O E, including those listed here like Student Enrollment, Office of Space Planning, we work closely with the School Construction Authority. And through those partnerships and our partnerships with community stakeholders like the superintendent, um the C E C, elected officials, we um do what we call the Annual District Planning Process, which is a comprehensive look at data trends, hearing feedback from community members, and then ultimately coming up with plans and strategies. Should there be any sort of potential changes that a district needs? And I see Venus is telling me to put my deck in the chat too, and I will, hi Venus. Please don't be playing that, I say hi. Um so this is kind of where we sit. And these are some of what I would say are the tools that we have in our toolkit in terms of the types of changes that our office might partner with communities to propose and to make in order to address some of those needs that come out of what is our kind of ongoing analysis. So rezonings and unzonings, the C E C is the voting body on any of those changes. We have not done one of those in District Twenty Five in quite some time. Um but oftentimes when we open new schools, if we create a zone for that school or if there's a, you know, a big shift in neighborhoods over time and there's a way to address overcrowding through potential rezonings, that is something that we do consider and definitely is rooted in both data and conversations with the community. And again, like I said, the C E C would would vote on any of those changes. And then the other changes listed here are voted on by the P E C, which is the Panel for Educational Policy. And we'll talk a little bit more about how those changes might get proposed. Um but we do, of course, partner with the C E C and school-based communities um and leadership in the neighborhood like the superintendent and and elected officials to ensure that we're proposing changes that are informed by data and community feedback and also that um you know, we're spreading the word and making sure there's buy-in on those types of of changes. And I think a lot of these things listed here, unlike some of our other districts in Queens, have not happened in in District Twenty Five in quite some time, um given frankly long-term overcrowding and and really like limited opportunities to make certain changes. Um but part of what we'll talk about tonight is some of the additions that are opening and some of the new capacity that's coming to the district and how there might be tools in our toolkit that we can leverage to serve the district. I'm gonna pass it to Raya and she'll talk a little bit more about both what O D U does and some data trends that we want to share.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Happy to join. Um as Reba said, my name is Raya and I'm going to give you a bit of an overview over what District Planning uh does and a few examples. So every year, O D P reviews and shares information with each C E C to help identify district planning needs and priorities. We look at enrollment, demographics, uh capacity to understand district trends. And sometimes the state of neighbor feel um, you know, overcrowding, capacity needs or special programming gaps. And we talk to the C E C and community stakeholders like we're doing tonight. Uh and the goal is to work together to prioritize and balance the need of the community with the data and overall district needs and trends. So here's a deeper overview of our process. O D P will gather and analyze data and we're always doing that. Uh and then we share annual report at a consultation just like this one tonight. Uh it's an opportunity for us not only to share what we have found, but also to gather some more data and information here for you all. And after we do that, we start to dig a little bit deeper. So we engage in the community to learn even more um about certain needs. Sometimes these conversations and S O T or C E C will come to us and say we want to make a change or a question might be asked um that will help give us some more context into a change that we're already thinking about. So then based on all of these conversations, O D P comes up with a potential plan to address district needs. Uh this usually starts the formal A one ninety or A one eighty five process. So the A one eighty five looks at rezoning, while the A one ninety focuses on changes to school utilization. Both of these are legally mandated processes and they have very specific guidelines that our office needs to follow. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the A one ninety, which is the Chancellor's Regulation that governs significant changes to school utilization. We're required to publish an educational impact statement called a three I S or a B U F called a Building Utilization Plan for Charter Schools um or District School Proposals. And these outline um the plan and the impact they may have on the community. Then we'll convene a joint public hearing with the C E C to engage impacted communities. Uh after that, we'll publish an analysis of public comment and then we'll arrange for the P E C, the Panel for Educational Policy, to vote on that proposal. And all of this information is published for the public to see. So in one example, uh in another district, a K to eight, a K to six school, sorry, said to us that they want to truncate the sixth grade. And the community feedback was very supportive and the data that we had um supported that this would be good for the students and good for the community and district. And so we worked with the uh office, uh with the principal, the superintendents, the S O T, the C E C to start the formal A one ninety process. So while that that is the legal process that we have to go to, we also um do try very hard to go above and beyond because we know that data doesn't quite show everything and we need additional context. So some examples of uh engagement we might do outside of that legal process are additional C E C collaboration, conversations with stakeholders like S O Ts, principals, elected officials, um and other D O E offices who might have a little bit more deeper is um context or insight to specific problems. Uh we also do building walkthroughs and community meetings and often these happen before, during and after um proposals are up for consideration. Uh one other example of some engagement that we did is when planning a new school, we worked really closely with the C E C to issue a survey to get feedback from families about the admissions process. We got over four hundred responses and it led to changes in our initial thought process of how we might zone a school. So the next thing I would like to show are some data summary highlights. And I do want to mention that uh these are from the twenty twenty two, twenty three Audit Register. And that was the most recent data that we had available, the twenty twenty three, twenty four um Audit Register for this school year has not yet been published. So here we're going to start with some citywide enrollment trends. And I want to start the conversation here so that we can understand where District Twenty Five sits within um context of the city. So this red line right on top shows that overall enrollment is down. That is the total decline of enrollment. We see that starting in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. It actually continues and picks up in decline during the pandemic and has continued that decline to extend. The blue line shows the city, the total citywide enrollment in district schools. And that is also following the same trend. The purple line shows a charter school enrollment, which as you can see has increased. So currently, the decline within city enrollment stands at about twelve percent. And for District Twenty Five, it's slightly lower, but following the same trend at ten percent. So these numbers here are District Twenty Five enrollment trends. And there are four interesting points that I want to call out. The first is we see a forty one percent increase in three K. Uh that's because this is a new program and it is phasing in. The second is that there have been declines in enrollment at all grade levels. Uh so it's not concentrated to one specific grade band. The third is over five years, the total decline in District Twenty Five is ten percent, again, which is in line with citywide data that shows twelve percent decline. However, while the overall enrollment is down, when we look year to year from twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, that rate of decrease has actually gone from four percent to one point three percent. So that data tells us that the loss of students or the rate of that loss is starting to slow. And that will be something to watch to see if um that decline stabilizes. Uh here, we want to look at retention. Retention shows the number of students in a Retention shows the number of students in a district and if those students are staying in the district versus where they are choosing to go. So it's really great because District twenty-five has an average retention rate of eighty percent for elementary school and middle school students. In fact, D twenty-five has the highest retention rate in Queens uh, for middle school and in elementary school, it is the second highest. So another example, looking at uh elementary school retention is that in addition to uh high rates of retention within the district, when we look uh, year to year over the last five years of where families are choosing to go, uh, the types of schools that they're choosing to go to have maintained relatively the same. There's been about a one percent increase or decrease between charter schools, other district schools, District twenty-five schools, non-public schools, et cetera. We also identified a need in District twenty-five for D seventy-five seats. Um, this chart shows this need by grade span versus capacity. Uh, so we can see that in elementary school, we can oh, sorry, we can't actually meet this need. There are three hundred and seventy-four students that need um seats. And we only have capacity to serve two hundred and ten. Uh, we see something similar in high school. There are more uh students who may need D seventy-five seats than we have the ability to serve. This is not the case for middle school. We are actually able to meet that need. So this would be something to consider as we dig deeper and talk to the community. And this is the type of analysis that um our office does and could lead to a proposal aimed at adding D seventy-five seats to the district. And it's always with the not only goal of adding these seats to the district, but making sure that middle school families don't have to travel outside of the zone to meet that need. So I wanted to show a a quick building summary of District twenty-five. We actually don't have any uh low-enrolled schools in middle, in elementary or middle school in District twenty-five, although there are a number of overutilized buildings. Uh, we do see here that uh with excess space on the bottom, uh, some schools that that maybe we need to either figure out a way to increase um, the amount of students that can be in that building. But not necessarily this one specifically, it's just looking at where we might be able to add programs or um offer things to students that may be needed. So that's the kind of work that our office does. And I'm actually going to pass it on to Reva, who's going to continue on with some of the capacity project.
And then our our last slide, and then we'll have a discussion and definitely answer some questions. Um, just going back to this last slide quickly, uh, we do in the data summary, which we um, which is public and I on my other computer cannot figure it out how to upload it into the chat, but I'm happy to where the C E C can share it through their platforms. Uh, we do have some enrollment data that we share across the city. We've pointed out schools that are in the bottom twenty-five percent of enrollment, which to Raya's point, does not exist in District twenty-five. This building, one eighty-nine, um, is underutilized in terms of space, not in terms of enrollment, and it does have um one eighty-nine, the middle school and Flushing High School. So when we see excess seats, sometimes this tells us, sure, maybe we could add something like a District seventy-five program. And we would, of course, look closely at this building to know that if there were excess space, it might be split across those two schools. And kind of like, this is not a a very basic formula. It's it's one way that we look at space in terms of the blue book numbers. But of course, um, schools that have multiple wards in the building already might not be the best place for new co-location. So we always list the buildings with three hundred seats plus excess. There's only one in District twenty-five. Um, and that was just an example. I just wanted to make sure that was super clear why that one was there. Um, and then this is kind of the flip side of that coin. This is where there's new capacity coming to the district. This top table shows the seats versus the enrollment for the schools across the district broken out into elementary school and middle school. So you'll see here that across the district, there's a fifteen hundred seat deficit at the E S level. A lot of that is going to be addressed through the upcoming capacity with the addition at thirty-two, the addition at one sixty-nine, and the new elementary school opening at Waters Edge Drive, which is in the one sixty-nine zone, kind of in the northernmost northern. I don't know. But it is in the one sixty-nine zone. I think that's a good way to orient folks and um, definitely adding E S capacity is um, you know, a goal and something that the S C A partners with us on, that's the School Construction Authority. Um, and when we look at seats, we look district-wide, and of course, there are pockets that are more overcrowded than others. Um, so this total number does not reflect some of the, you know, the trends at certain schools. And it helps us to kind of understand where there might be overcrowding or where there's a need. But again, it's like one data point in the the midst of many others. Middle school, there is sufficient capacity, but kind of in that same vein, some middle schools are are more overcrowded than others because this is a district-wide snapshot. Um, and then that last building there, five-ten, is the St. Agnes Building that is being converted into a new DOE High School. Um, so four new capacity projects, two additions, and two new schools. Um, and definitely something that is, I think, an area of focus in terms of everything we described about what district planning does in our work, I think, related to D twenty-five specifically, planning for this new capacity is definitely a big one. Um, so wanted to make sure this was visible for folks and we can start to talk about it. Um, and you know, we're here to to answer questions and discuss. Um, Kevin Lopez is here. Should I give a little context as to why he's here and and he can share too. Um, so Kevin is here with us also. He is the project director of a new high school that is opening in District thirty. Um, but as you all know, high school admissions are citywide and there's definitely a seat need for high school in Queens. So we wanted to make sure he was able to share information about that new school since the, I know the the middle school application was mentioned, the high school application is open too. So definitely want folks to be aware of that who might have eighth graders. Um, Kevin, we'll talk about his new school. It is planned to, through engagement and what would be a proposal by the P E C, which is the Panel for Educational Policy, go to the Northern Boulevard site, which is opening in District thirty at fifty-three dash sixteen Northern Boulevard. Um, and that building is opening in twenty twenty-five, so we are looking for space in District thirty for a one-year incubation of his school, which is what um that means that we will open a school kind of temporarily in a space for a year before it goes to its long-term site, before it it starts. Um, so it can start enrolling students before it goes to a site where it would have to kind of fill a lot of, a lot of seats really quickly.
That's a challenge in itself.
Yes, um, that is a challenge and um, but because this school is starting to, again, enroll students for next year, we did want to make sure you all were aware of the new school and that we were here to share some information. Um, and we work closely with with new school leaders in terms of of finding space and kind of planning for the buildings, when it's, you know, an elementary school or a middle school, there might be a rezoning. That's not the case for high school, but still part of our work. I know you have the presentation too. I don't know if you all want to turn it to him for his quick presentation and then you two in it?
Yes, okay.
Kevin? I'm setting it up for you.
Thank you, Reva. Uh, hi, folks. Good evening. Thank you for uh, having us here today and having me here today to briefly talk about this exciting new school that's coming to Northern Queens. Uh, Motion Picture Technical High School uh is the name that we're all very excited about. Uh, this is uh one of um the many uh schools under the Urban Assembly CUNY Network of Schools under Superintendent Fred Walsh, uh, Dr. Buffy with Field Executive Director. Um, and again, thank you, Reva and the team for this opportunity and C E C for the uh, the the chance to really talk about uh what's to come. Uh, Superintendent, thank you for for the opportunity as well. Uh, so let me go right into, I'm going to give you an abbreviated version of this uh presentation. This presentation is on the Motion Picture uh, tech uh H S dot org website. Um, it is uh available to the public, um, which uh goes a little further in depth on the vision, mission, and certainly on my uh career trajectory that brought me to this point. Uh, but the vision of the school is to create a pathway for New York City students from diverse backgrounds, preparing them for fulfilling and well-paying careers in the film and television sectors. So as many of you know, um, native New Yorkers understand that the Long Island City, Northern Queens area really continues to be the epicenter for much of production, uh, both in the film, television, and in the commercial space. So it's very important for us to really be in close proximity to the folks there uh, who have already committed, uh, many of which have already committed to becoming uh sustainable industry partners in a, in an initiative in in school like this. A little bit about about me, I was formerly uh, uh, as of recently, um, the Assistant Principal of the High School of Art Design. I ran the Art and C T E program. This is a cartoon dumb bum, one of my former cartooning uh C T E students. Uh, and I think that was a beautiful training ground for me to kind of lead it to this point, which ultimately is to create that synergy between uh, digital arts, media arts, visual arts, and the world of C T E. Think that the marriage between the two worlds is really powerful and empowering to students to truly uh channel their energy and their passion, their creative passions to uh real jobs. And that's the goal here is to create opportunities for students, create a pipeline for students within the media design and film sector to uh develop, like I mentioned earlier, fulfilling, well-paying jobs uh, after high school, after post-secondary uh opportunities, after college as well. Okay, so again, this information is on the website. You get to learn a little bit more about me. Done a lot of work in the in the C T E and film space. I also taught at the Frank Sinatra School of the Arts. I ran the film program there for a couple of years, uh, as well as worked in uh the community-based organizations with Tribeca Film Institute, Lincoln Film Society, so on and so forth. So I've been in this field for quite some time. And uh, it's really all coming together nicely uh with the creation of this building, with the support, of course, of Superintendent Walsh and all the folks that are helping us build this incredible school uh, which uh has a Queens priority. I think that that's very important to note is that the reason why we're here and the reason why I came here a couple of days ago, actually, I went to William Carr Junior High School for the awesome high school fair, gave me an opportunity to engage with students and families in real time. Uh, because uh not many people know that this school is coming. Uh, so it's important for us to get the word out, to get folks excited. And uh, to really just extend that olive branch to all corners of Queens, uh, because this is an opportunity that I think is is quite unique and groundbreaking uh in so many ways. And I think one of those things is that uh, it's important to note that we have two hundred unscreened seats that are coming to Northern Queens with a Queens priority designation. Right? So many of these programs that exist in the city, and I know firsthand, uh, are mostly audition portfolio-based programs. If you want to apply to the film program and art design, for example, you have to submit a portfolio, submit essays, uh, even a video essay, uh, which can become extremely cumbersome for many families uh, and daunting for many uh young aspiring filmmakers and media designers. Same applies to Frank Sinatra Cinema Schools, some other schools around the, around the city that offer unique programs like this. This is the first time uh where an unscreened school that's dedicated to the space uh is coming to fruition and we're very excited about that. Okay, so one of the things that we want to talk about is, you know, I went to film school, uh, and obviously a lot of kids, a lot of students are interested in becoming those hotshot, big-time directors and producers. We really want to encourage them to have those lofty dreams. But we're not here to sell them full gold. We want them to really understand that they're coming to this school to learn technical skills, creative skills, so that they can actually get jobs in what would they, what the industry calls below-the-line production work. Below-the-line work are all the end credits, most of the end credits that you see at the end of the movie, all those names, all those titles. Not many people know what those roles are, what those jobs are. And this is an opportunity with the support of industry partners, with the support, of course, of the T P E Office and the Arts Office as well, uh, to really contextualize what the different opportunities are uh for students that are interested in this field, right? To find an a career path uh that's sustainable, fulfilling, and creative. That's really what we want, what we want to bring to the city and what we want to bring to Queens. So ninety-five percent of all the jobs on a production set are considered below the line. Uh, only five percent of them are above the line, directors, producers. Uh, so that's something really important to note is that there are a variety of roles uh, that are, that are available, that the industry is hoping to fill with young, diverse voices. And this is that chance to uh create that pipeline uh with the industry. Uh, I'm going to wrap this up. I think one big point to note is that there is an equity component uh, that's really behind uh the motivation of building a school like this. We talked about ninety-five percent of the industry jobs are below the line, ninety-five percent of them are below the line, of which only five percent uh, are held by people of color, by by BIPOC folks, right? So there's obviously an equity or diversity challenge that Hollywood is faced with. Uh, it's gone to great extent, extent to really help diversify itself, but it's having a little bit of a crisis in doing so. And we think that a school like this will help create that sustainable pipeline where we can truly diversify an industry that wants to be more diverse from the ground up with young people. Again, this is a C T E school, so obviously our kid here, at the end of our journey, their journey through the four years of high school here in Queens, Motion Picture Tech, the goal is for the students to have an advanced region diploma, certainly fulfilling all their region's requirements and going above and beyond. But we also want them to have to graduate with that C T E endorsement. That C T E gold seal on the diploma just gives them, gives students the leg up, not only with post-secondary opportunities, but certainly gives them the uh technical skills and the certification in order to get these jobs that are recognized. Uh, so we want to be able to support them through this process. Just an example here of what the three different C T E pathways can look like. The film industry is broken up into several different buckets. The three main ones are technical, like imagine being on set, your camera, your lighting, your electrical work. Uh, your post-production, which is really exciting. It's an opportunity for students to delve further into gaming, virtual reality, artificial intelligence, editing, animation, graphic design. And then, of course, our third C T E pathway, which is really exciting. I've taught film in New York City for many, many years. And most high schools, not even colleges, really tap into this space, which is your art department, which is your production design. How do I get my students to think like architects? How do they develop uh production sets in many of these studios that uh that thrive here in New York? Right? So we're working closely with Kauffman Studios, working closely with Silver Cup Studios, Broadway Stages, a lot of these organizations. Where if you walk into that space, an entire world is built and we want students to understand how to develop that, how to develop those skills to to fulfill those dreams. Okay, and I just want to end off on this note. The Roy Vow Film and Television Fund is an organization in California that has helped launch a high school in downtown L A. Uh, the folks behind this are uh some, you know, big names, A-list actors, uh George Clooney, Eva Longoria, Don Cheadle, so on and so forth. But really, the driving force behind this are some industry key influencers from an organization called C A A, Career Artist Agency, and their president, Brian Lord, who is supporting in developing a curriculum that we can potentially use as well as a potential New York City-based board, industry board, to support these students uh through the four-year process. So we're really excited about the industry, industry partnerships. And of course, the industry partners that are here in New York, like Kauffman Studios, I mentioned, like R E Camera Rental. R E Rentals is the biggest camera rental house, production house in really the country. And they're based near New York and they just moved to sunny side Queens. So we definitely need to tap into that resource because they want to help. Uh, and we're here to connect them with students in real time. And I'm going to end off on this note. How to apply? So the deadline is December first. We all know this for high school uh enrollment. Uh, students can apply via my school. Uh, and uh, yeah, we're encouraging students to sign up if they, if uh, you know, speaking of parents and of community stakeholders, if you know a child, if you have a child at home that loves movies, that talks about making movies, that has a TikTok page, that has an Instagram page, and are always producing content. We want to be able to channel that energy, do it in an enriching way, and connect it with technical skills that really will help them uh, sustain or uh, you know, land an entry-level job if they so choose. We realize that not everyone that goes through this program can become a filmmaker or work in the film industry. So how can they use those skills, those transferable skills in any, any industry that they're interested in exploring in the future? So we encourage students to apply. We have two hundred seats. People are applying now, so it's important that you guys uh, uh, you know, uh, delve in and and and, you know, take a look at the, what we are offering and you're more than welcome to uh to reach out to me. My information is on the website. We have an Instagram account uh, that provides information of the school in real time. But more importantly, we do have our open houses that are coming up. These dates are on our website as well. Sign up. We have four open houses left in November, two of which are virtual and two which are in person. We don't have a site yet, like Reva mentioned. We're in the process of getting approval for a temporary site before we move to the permanent site, pending P P approval. But uh, the industry is opening its doors to have pending PP approval, but, uh, the industry is opening its doors to have in-person engagement. We're having an, an open house at Kaufman Studios on November sixth, Monday, next Monday, and then on the twenty-ninth, right before the deadline, at RE Rental. Seating is limited, but sign up. You guys can talk to me in person. You'll see some of my former film students there as well, as well as our industry partners that want to engage with parents, uh, uh, directly. That's it. Thank you very much. Thank you. We, so this is my planning year. We're starting officially September twenty twenty-four, right? For a cohort of two hundred, uh, ninth-grade students eager to learn filmmaking.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So do you, you're doing two hundred ninth graders? It, does that mean when you get your building, you're going or targeting eight hundred? Yeah, okay, yeah.
Very, very exciting.
It's super exciting. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for channel there?
Yeah.
Because we're doing like the rotating seats right now.
And if I can, you know, certainly if there are any questions now, uh, you can reach out or let us know. Um, but I am encouraging schools to invite us in. I am going back to William Carr next week to do a demo lesson. So I'm not, I'm going beyond just meeting students and families at high school fairs, beyond doing Zoom calls and talking to parents that way. I'm willing to come in and show kids, like, what it is to make a film. I'm bringing in some cool toys. I have some former students coming with me, and it's a lot of fun. And I think just creating that visual for students and parents and educators, uh, it makes, it makes this really lofty idea very tangible and realistic. Again, the goal here is to not sell, what I was sold at film school was to become a famous director. That is not sustainable. I'm trying to show them how to become actual technicians. They can get real jobs. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Kevin. Very exciting. Um, yeah. Okay, Reba?
I just, I'm sitting here in case you have questions, sure? So back to the district planning, uh, presentation, does anyone have any question? Um, so as the members, we are visiting, um, schools right now. And if we have any concern, um, can we send them to the district planning office? And when do you do the assessment on, on this? What do you mean by that?
So I visited, um, IS twenty-five and also PS one thirty. So PS one thirty is a, is a small school. They have three hundred and eighty kids. They don't have an auditorium and they don't have a gym, okay? And they don't have, they don't have a music teacher. So although they have enough classroom, they don't have the, the extra, you know, the auditorium and gym, you know, where the students can, you know, experience, um, a full gym class that they would enjoy. So the principal have asked, you know, is there any way, is there, you know, in terms of planning, how, you know, they, how can they expand? Because their first floor is being occupied by, uh, District, uh, the seventy-five. And that's where the auditorium and gym was on the first floor. So, um, the principal wants me to bring this up to District Planning Office. Also at IS twenty-five, the principal Nancy, her school is being shared with two other schools. They are max at capacity. They're sharing everything. And, uh, so they, they need more space or they want to find, have a, find another building to house the other school. Okay, so that, that's a.
How to split them up, right?
Yeah. I mean, they also have a DOT issue, but that's something, something different. So, you know, as we're, uh, visiting these schools and the principal are telling us what they need, can we bring this feedback back to District Planning Office?
Yeah, definitely. Um, we, if you can, you know, we can have regular check-ins, kind of whatever works best for, for this group. Um, Superintendent is also a great resource and, and we do speak, so I think sharing with both of us is, is definitely the right pathway. Um, with Q one thirty, when it comes to a building that doesn't have an auditorium or cafeteria, as you saw when I showed the new capacity slide, there's funding for adding seats, but there oftentimes is not funding for adding public assembly spaces in terms of at least construction. Um, but what can happen and what I would kind of leverage the folks at CTE planning or School Construction Authority or, or facilities to do is if, let's say, that building got rezaway funding from an elected official or there was a way for them to, um, figure something out, it's, you know, never impossible to convert a room to potentially meet a need or to kind of get creative within this space. Of course, I understand that doesn't entirely address the problem, but we, especially in this district, because of the overcrowding, you know, can't give up buildings, um, as you all know. So sometimes we have to make do with what we have, and there are ways to, to go about that through different funding streams and different, um, kind of creative solutions, which I'm always happy to, to collaborate on. Um, twenty-five is a building I'm, I'm definitely aware of. I know there is, um, yeah. Yeah, and six and all, they have.
Yeah, they, they kind of, they, they've lived in that space in that way for, you know, for, for quite a while. And certainly, the, you know, the past couple of years, if you look at twenty-five, their enrollment has increased, you know, comparatively speaking. And I think, you know, our, our middle schools in general, um, you know, the, you know, in terms of retention, we were the top in terms of middle school because our kids are coming to our middle schools, you know, you know, so it is a, it is a good thing. It's not necessarily, uh, a scenario where because IS twenty-five is located where it is, that the co-location is the problem. Um, it is a conversation in general around kind of the, the capacity within each of those buildings that we currently have, uh, and what does that look like over time, you know? And I think some of that, some of those seats will, will be, um, you know, supported over the course of time as new, new space comes available for, for our schools, but it wouldn't be because the, let's just say arguably, one school was to move, they have to go somewhere, you know? And there is not another somewhere to necessarily say that they would go. So the organization of that has been something that they, they've lived in for quite, for quite some time. It just so happens that their, their enrollment has also increased at, at twenty-five at the same time. But they also have limits. They can't grow beyond the space of what it is that they have, you know?
Yeah, so always, I think always happy to hear, you know, to hear feedback on where there are solutions, happy to work on them and where we can kind of just like help also folks understand maybe the, the broader landscape or what is within our, our limits of control, like the superintendent was, was just doing. We're happy to do that too, if, if that's ever, um, you know, kind of the information sharing that, that folks may need.
So, so the addition that, that's been built on, uh, one sixty-nine, in Bell Academy, is that for both the elementary and in middle school or just for?
Both.
Yeah. It's for both. Uh, and then the, the next question is the Waters Edge location, when are they supposed to break ground on that?
Um, I, I know it's opening in twenty twenty-six. I don't know where the construction is right now, but if they haven't broken ground, I imagine there's, there's any minute, hopefully. Um, but yeah, that one is intended to open for twenty twenty-six.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I don't know. Can folks, I don't know if folks can hear on the Zoom when I don't talk into the microphone. So the question was, when is Waters Edge opening? And I said, September twenty twenty-six. And also if the addition at one sixty-nine is for both PS one sixty-nine and Bell Academy, and the answer is yes. Both schools will have more seats.
Yeah, and now, you know, part of the conversation that Reba, myself, and, uh, our building leaders have been having is around organization of, of, of said space. So as, uh, as all of that becomes materialized, and there are a couple of other, other things technically around, um, just electrification within, within the building, uh, we'll be connecting with the community on that too, just so that everyone's aware of what, um, what that's gonna mean for them, um, moving forward. So that will be coming soon, um, you know, to, to everyone, certainly making the CEC aware as well. But, um, that, that is in process in terms of how they, how is that can be organized for, uh, for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you very much, Reba and Ria for your presentation, and Mr. Lopez, uh, for introducing what it comes to, the, uh, your new school. Um, if, you know, a, after this meeting, anyone has any questions, um, what I will share, um, Reba's information to you, and you can contact her. Um, so, thank, thank you again. The next on the agenda is the vacancy candidate vote. Um, we have now, um, Alvin Hung and Frank Chow that joined our meeting, so we could move into that. Um, and hold on, uh, our, uh, vacancy candidate. And we interviewed three candidates, uh, for the two vacancies that we have on the CEC. Uh, Lisa Castillo, uh, Christine Benz, and Catherine Santora. And, um, they were all very great candidates, um, if each have something that they can bring to CEC. Um, I want to hear from other members, um, you know, how they, their, the feedback from the interviews that we've done with these three candidates. Anyone?
May I make a suggestion? Can we just vote? And if we don't have seven, then we talk about it in the name of same time.
Does everyone agree? Do you?
That's fair, because then we talk.
So I, so Carly will do the roll call, and then we each will tell you the name of the person you're, well, are you voting for? So three.
Colonel, what are you? We're not voting yet, Colonel. Are you voting for two people?
No, we're voting on the three candidates.
Right, but are you voting for? Because we have the two spots.
We're gonna vote for Percy, the first vacancies.
And then you're gonna vote back again and vote for the second?
Yeah.
Or we may not.
Or we may not, okay.
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 Okay. So.
He's supporting Joseph maybe.
No, I'm supporting just kids.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
I agree with you.
It's eight thirty.
No, look, I, I just wanna know what we're doing. I don't have a, yeah, okay.
Good.
So.
Ask him first.
Okay, well, but.
I, I think, I think tonight is like, we have two open spots, we have three candidates.
Yeah.
If any one of them gets a majority.
Yeah.
Will be voted in. If none, if none of them gets voted in, then of course the process continues and we start to find.
Okay. We're voting for a position today.
Yeah.
At least one.
At least one, right?
Yeah.
Who's the child?
Who are we voting for?
That's the question, who are you voting for?
Number one. Karen?
Catherine.
Catherine Santora was the last one interviewed. Yeah. Yeah, so. And then, and then Lisa Castillo is, um, the ones that were together.
Yeah, yeah.
At the same time.
Yes.
And, um, Christine went first, and then, and then Lisa Castillo went second.
Yeah.
And then the most recent interview, which was on, uh, the thirtieth, uh, was Catherine Santora.
That's why you're the second.
I'm useful.
Okay.
I apologize. I, I assumed that he under, you know, he knew what we were voting on. Yes, he had made a suggestion, but didn't know.
All right, I'm just gonna go down a little bit. How I'm already listening to you.
So may, just give us the name of the person, okay, of the, yeah, one of the three candidates.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Joseph Chow, who is the choice? He told you. Catherine. Okay, when you?
Uh, Catherine Santora.
Colonel, Catherine, set it on there. Frank Chow?
Yeah, okay.
Frank?
Yeah.
He said, he said.
Okay.
Samuel Lee, Charlotte.
Catherine.
Alvin Hung?
Vote for Catherine Santora.
Eden Winkins?
Catherine Santora.
And Robert Wazora?
Catherine Santora.
Well, you have an anonymous.
So we have a unanimous vote, uh, for Catherine Santora to fill, uh, so one of the vacancies on CEC. Congratulations. She is here tonight, Emma R. Penn. We thank you. Um, do you mind, you wanna, you know, give it your introduction to the public?
Um.
Actually, you actually can come to and sit at the table now. So, so that the public know who you are, um. Okay.
Yeah, I think they'll say it right.
So, good evening. Thank you, everyone. I'm honored to be a part of this group and in this room tonight. Um, and just to introduce myself to anybody else who's, um, interested. My name's Catherine Santora. I handle. Um, I'm a three kids, a middle schooler and two elementary school kids. Um, my background prior to being a mom was I have a dual master's in early childhood um, education from first to second grade in general education and in special education. I taught, um, a nursery program, UPK program, and then my final time teaching was spent at the Wingward School where I taught, um, children with language-based learning disabilities. Um, primarily dyslexic children, but of course, like, it's a comorbidity situation where they don't just have, um, dyslexia, they also have, uh, you know, a lot of other focus concerns going on. Um, so that is, um, a little bit about me, and thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Um, Carly will send you the schedules of the meetings.
And I will add just to the.
To the, yeah, to the email.
Email, Google, or email.
Yeah.
Everything of those emails.
Okay, great. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Um, so now we have one more vacant seat. Um, I, does the, does the other members want to vote on filling the second seat or you want to table this? We, do we need to vote on this, whether to table, no? You want, do you want a table? Okay, so we will table, um, voting on the second vacancies for December. Okay, so moving on, um, on October twenty-sixth last Thursday, um, Shirley, Alvin and I, we attended, we were invited to the legislative breakfast. If, uh, CEC was invited to legislative breakfast at Flushing High School, and Alvin, Shirley and I, we attended, and it was our first time at the, uh, legislative breakfast where the three schools, Flushing High School, Veritas Academy, and the Queens High School of Language Studies all gave a presentation on the issue that they advocated on. And, um, I think Veritas, uh, advocated for the modernization of their library. I think Flushing High School advocated on, on college, on more, more help on college admissions, admission process. And the Queens High School of Language Studies, they advocated on safety. So the Deputy Borough President was present at the, uh, breakfast that morning, and they, uh, gave a grant to Flushing High School, one point five million dollars to modernize, um, their library. So congratulations to all three schools. Dalton was there, and we were very excited for her. We're very proud of her. Um, do you want to say a few words? Um, do you wanna say a few words?
Um, the legislative breakfast, I would consider a major success. As we were not only able to communicate and network with other politicians, but we were also able to unite all three schools on the three goals within what the campus truly thinks.
Okay. So invite us to your next legislative legislature breakfast, we're excited, very excited. Okay, so um we'll move to the public speaking time. What was that? Oh, so we have um Jared Freeman from Data Charter Schools.
And then we got home.
Um, I'm going to give him the floor. So Kevin, he went, so, okay, so, Mr. Freeman?
Good evening. So I I'm from Data Charter Schools, we are currently in upper Manhattan. Moving to Queens and coming to uh possibly this area, so we wanted to introduce myself but also tell you a little about Data Charter Schools and what we do. Uh, so we uh have a whole child ed-education model, we look at educating the child, but also working with the the communities that we go into. And so we look to hope to partner with you in great ways, but also looking at how uh we how we can be a great resource uh as well, so you can, uh, I I'm happy to share my information or answer any questions if you may have. Uh, some things uh unique about our school that we offer currently, uh, we have a strong academic program, our our students are performing pretty well. Uh, we also offer a number of really unique uh specialty programs, violin, chow, orchestra, violin, viola, uh, to the name of you. Uh, but we also try to find creative ways to really educate our students, not to in the classroom, but outside the classroom and working with the families and the communities. So really excited to to meet all of you, but also share what we're looking to to build, I would say, a charter school here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Um, next we have Joanna from P S two forty-two.
Hi, uh, my name is Joanna Conradis Papalas, and I am a teacher for over twenty-two years at the one, P S two forty-two, uh located right here in District twenty-five. Um, I'm actually here also because we have uh seats available, so if you're looking for a wonderful um early childhood school, P S two forty-two is the place to be. Uh, the families, if you're looking for a small nurturing, family-oriented school, two forty-two is the place to be. Please consider applying as the application, the kindergarten applications do open on December seventh. Um, two forty-two is recognized as a national blue, blue ribbon school, both in two thousand sixteen and for the two thousand twenty-three school year. Uh, we are a high-performing school. We provide um um academic interventions, um, we have wonderful clubs for your children. Um, our next open house is in person and it's on Tuesday, November fourteenth at nine A M. We are also offering another date and I just wanna double check that. Second. This office, um, great location.
With the red windows.
Uh, our next um open house is scheduled for Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine A M again, so that would be Tuesday, November fourteenth at nine A M and Wednesday, November twenty-ninth, at nine A M. Um, we offer a Mandarin and uh Mandarin bilingual, transnational bilingual class. Um, we have outstanding family school partnerships. Uh, we offer P A L, which is Parents and Learning Partners, where parents, families come in and spend um time with their teachers and students, their their children, we offer a K L T program, which is the Kids Leadership Team, which is just like the S L T, but it's the K L T. Yeah, it's a, it's, it's wonderful, some great conversations. We have a musical theater program with um a wonderful um Broadway screenwriter, Alistair Kitten. We have a together and dance program. We have cheerleading clubs, sports, dance, gardening, weather design. Um, and we have busing available to all families who consider. Let me to our wonderful place. Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, are there any new bits?
Big Lamar also.
Oh Lamar, I'm sorry Lamar. Are you still?
Let me get, are you still here?
All right, can you all hear me?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Hello, everyone, good evening, good to see you all, how you doing?
Good.
I can speak for the wonders and the beautiful virtues of P S two forty-two. It is, it is, it is a shining light when every time I, when every time I drive by the building, I just wanna put that out there. Wonderful place to go and wonderful place to work at. Um, so my name is Lamar Hughes, for who those I may not have mentioned, uh, who I may not have met before, I am the U F T representative for District twenty-five. I work at P S two oh one, which is right across the street from Queens College, that's my homeschool. Um, just here to give a couple of announcements, uh, a reminder that this Saturday, November fourth is our autism workshop. We're having workshops on how parents can work with their children and their school communities on um working with their children who may be, who who may be autistic, what that looks like in terms of navigating through the school system, navigating through communities and such. We have as a keynote speaker, New York Assembly Member Khalil Anderson, who, as I mentioned at our last C E C was a District seventy-five student. So now he's a, he's an assembly member, a legislator in Albany. Um, in terms of other announcements, on November eighteen, which is a couple Saturdays from now, we're having our annual U F T Parent Conference. Um, it'll be at our Queens office on one eighteen thirty-five Queens Boulevard. So we'll be offering um childcare, obviously, let's start there, childcare for people who wanna bring their children, the children will be watched by D O E teachers in a separate space so that the parents can attend the workshops. We will have workshops on managing budgets, how to communicate with your child, money management, disaster preparedness. Our president, Michael Mulgrew, will be president, our Queens Borough President Donovan Richards will be present as well. And in terms of moving on, in terms of uh on the political end, we are approaching Election Day, which we all know is this coming Tuesday. So our first reminder to everyone is please, please, please vote, vote, vote. For the record, our union, our, our union is endorsing for the District nineteen city council seat, Tony Avella. We're also endorsing for the District twenty city council seat Sandra Ung for the District twenty-three council seat Linda Lynn, Linda Lee, excuse me, and for the District twenty-four council seat James Gennaro. So we're standing behind those candidates. Um, we're inviting all, everyone in the community to vote and those are my announcements, thank you all, it's good to see you. You all have a great evening.
Thank you Lamar.
Long applause workshop, where it's gonna be.
Can you read that on please?
The November fourth um workshop, where, where, can you give him the address?
I will, I'll give you the address now, but I'll also send the flyer out.
We have a flyer here.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yeah, we'll give him the flyer.
Thank you.
Thank you Lamar.
No problem, all right.
Are there other? Are there any other speakers on the chat?
No.
No? Okay. So. So, anyone have any new business? Otherwise, I will move to adjourn the November twenty-twenty-three meeting. Okay, Shirley and Eden second. Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break. There is a few things I want to bring up at the business meeting. Thank you, thank you all, have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving, because we won't be back until December seventh.
They're waiting on the door winners. So we have, we have two people that didn't put, put votes in, I do have those. So if there's anyone else who didn't vote that would like to, if you do it now, we can, I have the the winners currently. But we have two people that didn't submit um their first, second, or third votes.
Carly, who put this package together?
This is um the district office, I'm pretty sure Esther and Jane.
You recognize the school, I love it.
Oh, Marissa did, okay.
Oh, they all had a good job.
I have it.
On second.
Yeah.
I don't know why that's still in that today.
There's our other one. He's showing you pictures.
This whole voting thing is kind of I am sort of place where they don't vote.
When you get to the second choice, it shows you all the
It's gonna show them again.
Oh.
So you gotta pick first, second, third.
Oh.
I don't know if I did it right.
Yeah, it confused me at first also, I started thinking, I was like, wait, but I took a bigger.
Oh, thank you, Reba. That was hilarious. And just so you know, it is on recording, so you might want to get a little a little extra special clip that's sent you on a routine. Somewhere I wanna start.
He was speaking too probably, so.
Very nice, did you, did you do a good job of uh trick or treating?
I probably count. I sorted this weekend.
So do you do the, I'm gonna start counting them as soon as we get home? I have, I have, I have winners, but it depends on whether or not this changes the vote.
Yeah.
All good?
Yeah, all good.
I did, yeah, I think I did it. Well, it's gonna be good now. Even got a fancy.
Nice. This is, this is a win today.
So Catherine's daughter is actually in our class.
Yeah. Yeah, is uh
Oh, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
I'm excited to be on board.
Yes.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm nervous. Thank you, yeah, it's like it.
Lewis is tallying.
He went up, that's how you know he's working. See, I, I explained to her when we were trying to find the, make sure the time and everything was gonna work for Monday night.
Louis is, Louis is checking in right now.
You voted? I did, I did, I did it quick, I did it, I was as efficient as possible, like I say, so.
Thank you Wendy.
All right, Dr. Mike. I made, I made slides for you.
Okay.
They're in the bottom of the uh of all the doors.
Has it been five minutes yet?
Louis, where did you say you put it? Is it in my slide deck?
Uh, no, no, yeah, there's a, there's a separate deck of all the doors. Um, there's a separate deck in the, in the C E C folder.
Did you share it with me?
Uh, yeah, you can, yeah, it's public, but I just sent you the link on Teams.
Okay, got it.
Slide twenty-five.
So you're, you're Carly, it's very nice to meet you.
No matter what we told them.
My favorite thing, my daughter on shorts yesterday.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Slide twenty-five, slide twenty-five.
Have a good day. Yeah, I'm going Louis. All right, the votes are in, votes, the votes are in.
Okay, votes are in. Now come back to the speech, the votes are in. I got tired.
Full screen, go full screen, Dr. Mike, go full screen.
Congratulations to all of our schools and all of our participants, I appreciate um all of them for engaging in this work to really promote reading across our district uh and the joy that should come with reading, so I thank everyone for engaging in this, so without further ado, here we go, our first prize winner is PS one zero one Clippers first autumn. Congratulations, P S one thirty. For our second prize winner, computer class leaf jumpers from P S twenty-four. And then from P S thirty-two, in two fifteen, the little old lady who was not afraid of anything. Thank you so much to all of our award recipients, you will be receiving a special visit from me. Uh, and I will be bringing certain things, I will not tell you what those things will be yet, but I will be bringing uh a nice little treat for all of our kids that participated. So congratulations. I don't think Starbucks, I'm like, no, I don't think that.
All right, so.
Thank you, can't wait.
So we will now move into the business meeting. Right, um, but I, they were still um on the, on the, on the Zoom, there's.
Oh, that's me, sorry. So excited about our So excited about our.
Okay, so it is eight fifty-five. I am calling the business meeting to order. Yeah.
When you?
Present.
Karol Krasie. Karol. Do you want to learn from?
Yeah.
Joseph Chow.
Present.
Song Young Lee.
Present.
Alvin Hung.
Present.
Eda Luwesin.
Present.
Robert Wazora.
Yep.
And Catherine, Catherine Satora.
Present. I guess so, I guess I am. We don't need to run anymore.
He's not, no, he's not on there.
Karol, are you on?
He's not.
No.
I think. Okay, so I have a couple of things um that I need to bring up to the council. One is, uh Carly sent this. Uh flyer. To, I don't know if everyone received this flyer. It's a Queensboro Hill Flushing Civic. Association meeting on November sixteen. With Senator John Liu at the Flushing Library uh from six thirty to seven thirty P M. He will be talking about, uh, I guess the, the topic is education and the future of our schools. He'll discuss about the bills in Albany School Funding, Teacher Burnout, Student, Mental Health, Immigration, Parent Resources. So I. I am, okay. Yeah, I am going, so I hope the other C E C members can join me that night. Okay. Next. Is. The D C thirty-seven telework pilot, D C thirty-seven is. The union that Carly belongs to, okay, and they're. Um. Came up with a pilot to. Allow um the employees to work remotely. Two days, one or two days of the uh work week. And um all the D C thirty-seven employees are entitled. To the, to participate in this program. And Carly has expressed to me that she'd like to participate in this. And um have requested to work remotely Thursday and Friday. Okay. Does anyone have any questions because it's? Because I, the way we've been communicating with Carly is through phone and email, right? We don't come into the district meeting other than to the meeting, right? So for me, you know, her working remotely is fine, um but if you have, you know, questions on logistics. Um.
Are you asking us to vote?
No, we don't, we, we, I'm just telling you this, you, we, we can't, we're not voting on it. We can't vote on it.
That's fine.
Yeah, so I'm, but if you have any question, I have to let the members know of this program, and if you have questions, you know. We need to discuss it.
Email her.
It doesn't change anything.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Exactly.
So also, there is a form that I have to sign. The, um, yeah. Right?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so that's that. So I will be signing out. If you have the form with you. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll stay to sign a form.
How's musical into a factory? Yeah, I just verify something here or. Our, our next meeting, um, for the C E C falls on the Thursday. Does that mean that Carly is gonna be?
Well, no, see, my, my job title requires me to be part of C E C meetings unless something. The only time I haven't been in a C E C meeting is at the past one. That is like a big, I'm here. It has to be a real reason why I'm not here. Like, look, I'm in here, but I'm here.
Wait, our next meeting's on Thursday?
Seventh is a.
Wednesday.
The Wednesday.
About looking at my calendar, uh, uh, thing is.
Oh, it actually is a Thursday.
The sixth, December sixth is the Wednesday. So. Or.
I'll fix it, and it's the summer sixth, and now the, the summer sixth, that.
I have December sixth on the, on the website.
Okay, so that was a tight one. It's still on a Wednesday.
So you'll send the meeting invite.
She's here at the jury duty today.
Yeah. Okay, the author. Um.
Thank you all.
So. The principal at PS one oh seven um had. Told me that she is nailing down to a parent coordinator candidate. And as, um, and we have to schedule a meeting to meet with the candidate. It's a, it's, I wouldn't say it's not interview, it's more of a meet, meet and greet. Uh, type of meeting. So. Um, I want to get some dates and times. Right now, from the members, uh, your availability for next week. So. Wednesday? Can we do twelve thirty?
Yep.
Wednesday twelve thirty.
Now, I can, I'm, I'm visiting PS twenty-one, and you're interested in coming with me. At three o'clock.
Wait, what day?
Next week, Wednesday.
Also Wednesday?
Oh.
What time?
So on Wednesday, you're visiting?
Uh, PS twenty-one at ten o'clock. So I think if it's twelve thirty, I think possibly.
Yeah, okay, Wednesday. Okay. Let's push it to one o'clock.
Okay.
Is one o'clock, okay?
Please Thursday. I have Thursday. Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes, one, one o'clock. Would you be available?
I should be there.
This week before, before pickup.
I know, I said. Yeah.
He's twenty-one at one o'clock?
This is a meeting.
Where? PS one oh seven?
It'll be on Zoom though.
It's on Zoom, yeah.
Then it's no problem at all. Yeah.
Right now, Wednesday, one P M. Alternatively, is there another date, just?
I know, like with the holiday. Next week, if something like that, it makes the school week difficult, so.
Seven and ten is.
The seventh is a school product day.
Yeah.
Ten is better than that.
No, but school.
Yeah, there's no. Yeah, it's over the weekend, Saturday. So we, it's not, it's not being, uh, yeah, we don't, we don't get the date.
Can, can we do?
From Friday?
So Thursday or Friday technically, if anyone has availability.
Yeah. So let's do Thursday, because I don't want, I know Friday.
Thursday is a middle school parent teacher conference.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. You're right. Okay.
So Friday?
Friday. Friday at one?
So not on Wednesday, right?
No. This is, this is Friday. Okay, alright.
Yeah, really push for, push for the Wednesday, soon as you can get. In that role.
Yes.
Let other members know that on Wednesday, I'm visiting PS twenty-one. PS twenty-one uh at ten o'clock, but also Thursday, so.
Yeah.
Thursday, P S M S two hundred.
Ten A M.
I have a visit for nine o'clock.
Wednesday, seven, yeah.
Thursday.
Also eleven.
I gotta respond for principals.
So I'm sorry, the second one, I'm sorry.
Oh, nine o'clock on Thursday.
Nine o'clock on Thursday. Oh, it's the very next day?
Yeah.
Yeah, where's, where's Thursday?
Uh, Thursday is P S M S two hundred.
M S two hundred.
Does P S?
Does that one at nine A M also?
Yeah, so I guess after drop off.
Yeah. Cause I had to pick up, I had to pick him up at eleven thirty that day.
Well, it's optional, it's not mandatory. Yeah. Okay, okay. Anyone else? I will give it to you hopefully tomorrow. Yeah. No, you, yes. Right. Um, anyone else have? I spoke to the principal at IS twenty-five, they have. Traffic issue during pickup and drop, drop off, and they're actually, um. Wanted the C E C support in this program. And I will email the details to you, um, because it's just way too much information right now. Um, so I'll send that to you all tomorrow.
IS twenty-five there.
Yeah, I think, I did just think that where they, where they are in terms of.
They wanted to.
Um, location. Right off Francis Lewis Boulevard.
Yeah.
Um, it's just, yeah, it's just. Because of that, and then they also have multiple schools within the school, so when school buses start arriving. It limits the amount of space in and out of that area, so you'll, you'll have parents that kind of build up on Francis Lewis itself. And I always forget that Thirty-Fifth Avenue also becomes, becomes uh highly congested also. Because what, what families do, and this is a, this part is common. Um, because they want to be able to drop off, they then both sides become a little bit nightmarish on, on either side of Thirty-Fifth Avenue. And then, I forget what road it is, right in front of the school. It's a very narrow block, that's a two-way.
Yes.
So it becomes very congested on that space too, so they get traffic on. In every direction from where the school is located. So there's not like a space where you say, let me redirect and go here, so they do have some of that, some of that issue. It's not uncommon. You're right in that, Mr. Chow, it's not uncommon with the, with the concerns.
Principal want to, um, block off the. One of the side streets, that is the two-way narrow street. Uh, during. Pick up, yes, certain hours. And they need, they are bringing this uh to the community board meeting on November sixth. So they want a letter of support.
From C E C, yeah. I think IS twenty-five, because PS thirty-two is only two blocks away from IS twenty-five, so I know it gets very congested. So what, I think what they do is. One of the teacher blocks the road.
Yeah.
Near, next to the.
We, at one oh seven, we have parent that's volunteering to, you know, by right traffic.
They're doing it as a volunteer because.
Yeah. Uh huh, so parents been volunteering also. So even the, you know, frost guards is not enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think i- it's difficult because a lot of the congestion is developed by people that are actually within the community. You know, um. The whole spot of that is how do we also help kind of communicate amongst the masses in, in the community of how important it is to make sure our kids get into the building in a safe way? And sometimes that might mean you have to wait a little bit longer to drop your child off than what sometimes happens. It's the, you know, I, I can't tell you how many times I've seen where it's not just a drop off, it's I'm gonna get out of my car. Leave the car running, and then go and bring my child into a space where I feel comfortable enough. So it's not always just I'm gonna drop and then go kind of thing, it's, so there does, you know, there are lots of variables, it's just not an easy answer. But, you know, if there was space, there are some schools that, where they can say during these hours. It's only one, one direction. It would alleviate some of that. Congestion, but um even at that, they're still gonna have. Yeah. Congestion dish, congestion issues. There's a thousand children at IS twenty-five, there's probably another six hundred or so at. Um, east-west, and then um whatever there is for the D seventy-five program, so. You know, there are a number of children that are in that space. Um, in an interesting location in terms of. Highly trafficked Thirty-Fifth Avenue, highly trafficked Francis Lewis Boulevard, and then a very narrow.
Uh huh.
Side street that is kind of connecting that all of that, so. Um, but I think any, any. Additional support can help.
We'll just get involved, the D O T also.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
They need to change rules or.
Yeah. So I'll. I'll send the November sixth meeting uh information to everyone, okay? Um, if you have time to. It's um, join the meeting, that would be great. And then I. I, it's virtual, yeah, virtual. Um, the November sixteen, that's in person, at uh the Flushing Library on Main Street.
Right.
With Senator Liu.
Senator Liu's.
Yeah, six thirty to seven thirty. Yeah, I said I was, I said I'll participate, I'll go if like to, you know. As a representative from C E C, but now they put me on a panel, I'm like, uh, what am I expected? Like, what am I supposed to talk about?
I'll be there.
So, so, you know. I'm like, okay, wow.
Better be careful, Charlie, that might get passed really quickly though.
Alright.
Share this with my co-panelists.
Um, anyone else has, do you have any questions? Eden? Okay, so it's nine thirteen. Okay. Now motion to adjourn the meeting for nine seconds.
I thought, if you guys do have any ideas, because I am gonna be in touch with uh, with D O T. Particularly their education programs. Uh, not, not necessarily connected with that, because there's two separate departments of it, but. If there are workshops that you feel would be really beneficial. Um, that's what I'm connecting them with them for, so that they can offer things for us, you know, at the district space, so if there are things that you would like. That you feel as parents, you know, that would be really helpful just for, you know, it's one thing I constantly talk to my child about X, Y, and Z. Sometimes hearing it from another voice goes a long way. Um, you know, parent and child together. Um, you know, so I'd be happy to connect with them, you know, about anything that you feel is important. The bike safety is one, been hearing a lot about kids on scooters without helmets, um, as another.
No, I actually witnessed a school bus hitting a grandfather on a bicycle who just dropped off his grandson at a pool. Like in the rain.
So those types of things, you can, you know, I likely am on it, also I'm not forgetting them.
We were all discussing in our chat, like, what do we do?
So all of that stuff is, thank you so much, I will certainly share with.